More than 100 years since the inauguration of this building, the OES headquarters, our institution still brings together the peoples of the Americas to address our responsibilities as a partnership of nations. As we look to the future, our work must also focus on the construction of a positive agenda that continues to favorably impact millions of lives every day.
The COVID-19 pandemic brought unprecedented challenges to all member states and the people we serve. In response, the OES Secretariat for Integral Development adopted a three-pronged approach by: one, adjusting our portfolio of existing projects; two, exploring new projects to meet emerging needs; and three, expanding multisectoral partnerships. Results achieved in 2020 demonstrate the resilience of our member states and the commitment of the OES SETI to work with member states and partners towards our common goals in the development of our region. Our Network on Competitiveness launched the COVID-19 Ideas Accelerator, sharing 250 tools, health solutions, responses, and recovery plans. The Network for Labor Administration published a portfolio of responses from ministries of labor to COVID-19, sharing over 420 measures taken to protect workers, employment, and income. Likewise, the Inter-American Teacher Education Network series, Teaching STEM in Quarantine, provided 117,000 teachers with key tools to continue advancing STEM education during the pandemic. Through its network and platforms, the Inter-American Committee on Ports promoted international and national best practices, guidelines, protocols, and recommendations on COVID-19 safety measures and continuity of logistic operations. Initiatives such as the Education in Times of Change platform allowed us to meet urgent needs by offering timely tools on virtual education and a dedicated space for ministries to share strategies, actions, and solutions. Other programs such as the RHO fund stepped up, providing emergency grants to offset the challenges imposed on our students by the pandemic. SETI's partnerships are adding value to member states in the form of technical assistance, training, and access to tools and services. In partnership with leading private sector institutions, we offered micro, small, and medium enterprises access to online tools and training, increasing their visibility and participation in e-commerce, a key to their survival and growth in the pandemic and post-pandemic era. A new OES SETI Facebook initiative provided 85,000 MSMEs across the region with capacity building opportunities and WhatsApp business tools to aid response, recovery, and resilience building. SETI's results for 2018 proves our effectiveness as a development partner, placing people at the center of our work and leveraging partnerships and cooperation to transform policy imperatives into action. With an eye on the rapidly changing global context, SETI is innovating to constructively address the emerging challenges and opportunities for the region. As part of our competitiveness program, SETI is designing precise tools to assess assets and capabilities in the productive sector to determine paths towards higher-value goods and services. As our flagship program for partnerships, the Americas' Competitiveness Exchange on Innovation and Entrepreneurship, DAS, will continue to leverage good practices and the power of networks to increase trade and investment in the region.
For us, the role of the OES is very important, connecting countries, connecting governments and private sector, and letting us know what other countries are doing it and how we can replicate that in our countries to enhance development.
For me, who has come here to look at how can we develop our own ecosystem, our own innovation, our own accelerators, I think seeing this touching feeling, seeing the transformation, seeing how quickly it made it happen is a testament to what is possible. So I believe all of us live here strong in our neighborhood.
The Working Group of Experts on Subnational Competitiveness, the GTAX, is our gateway program to promote local economic competitiveness policies alongside municipal and state-level governments, together with the private sector and academia.
Este tipo de reuniones te sirven para darte cuenta de todo lo que está viviendo en América Latina sobre los temas de competitividad y hoy justamente en este sector estamos viendo sobre todos los temas de innovación tecnológica, pues que si hablamos de competitividad tenemos que hablar de tecnología y nos está ayudando mucho para ver el panorama de ver lo que están haciendo otras ciudades y lo que podemos llegar a aplicar también nosotros en México.
The hub on the transfer and commercialization of technology is strengthening national innovation ecosystems by training budding entrepreneurs to take promising products and services from idea to market.
Porque es importante que estemos juntos en esto porque la región tiene que estar unida y me parece que es mucho conocimiento en la región que todavía no está explotado comercialmente como podría hacer y esta es la mejor manera de hacerlo.
Tenemos la proyección de cada año generar y compartir nuevas experiencias entre aquellos que contribuyen a la innovación. Queremos cambiar el cómo lo hemos estado haciendo en Latinoamérica. Queremos generar la unión de los países. Queremos colaborar.
Our virtual platform on technology foresight, Prospector Americas, will support OES member states in identifying and mapping future trends and technological development of critical importance for the Americas.
Este esfuerzo, el cual viene siendo apoyado por la organización de los Estados Americanos, nos permitirá tener una gran información para poder mapear estas iniciativas de innovación y poder que ellas contribuyan al crecimiento económico, a la competitividad, y al bienestar de nuestras naciones.
Como bien sabemos, nos encontramos ya en la cuarta revolución industrial, la que está cambiando rápidamente la forma en que se hace negocio, se produce, se consume, y se genera bienestar y entretenimiento en el mundo. Es la mayor amenaza, tal vez la mejor oportunidad, que tenemos en nuestras naciones.
The Inter-American Teacher Education Network, the I-10, is working to improve the quality of teachers with an emphasis on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education. In 2019, the I-10 launched the first STEM teacher fellowship of the Americas. The Energy and Climate Partnership of the Americas, ECPA, is working with governments in the Caribbean to advance electric mobility and clean transport as a sub-region pursues energy independence. Under our Integrated Water Resource Management program, SETI is responding to the demand for platforms and applications that capture and disseminate real-time information. This includes the expansion of Costa Rica's Plataforma Interactiva de Aplicación del Clima Tropical to the rest of Central America to help build resilient agriculture. The Inter-American Committee on Ports is building human and institutional capacity through public-private partnerships to address port modernization, logistics, and security. CooperNet, SETI's multi-stakeholder platform for cooperation and partnerships, is being relaunched in 2019, responding to member states' call for a more robust hub for cooperation. As more consumers begin or end their shopping process online, SETI has entered into a partnership with the private sector to digitize millions of micro, small, and medium enterprises across the region.
Las buenas noticias es que sabemos por qué están fracasando, porque no son visibles. Y el hecho de que ahora lo puedan ser haciéndolo ellas mismas no solamente rompemos las tres barreras del tiempo, conocimiento, y dinero, sino que les permitimos tener éxito y dejar de fracasar a los porcentajes que lo hacen ahora.
Es una herramienta que sin duda acerca a las mitimes hacia la demanda que hoy está migrando a internet y con eso pretendemos mejorar las ventas y el posicionamiento de las empresas pequeñas.
As we look to the future, the Executive Secretariat for Integral Development will continue to leverage cooperation and partnerships to expand our reach, proving that together we are much more than the sum of our 34 member states.
Me and my kids have been there for over an year right now, and children are friends. It doesn't matter where they come from.
Nosotros estamos en una zona netamente selvática. La línea de adyacencia va desde el norte hasta el sur, va desde Modesto Mendes hasta Aguasturbias, tanto en el norte como en el sur. Esta línea tiene 215 kilómetros de extensión.
Y allí vino él, desayunó creo con los de la OEA, y de ahí vino el proyecto para acá, para ayudar. Y fue que lo dieron el terreno, y este, lo dieron todo, que era mano de obra, y el material para hacer en las casas que están abiertas. Y por ese motivo estamos aquí viviendo con la vida.
La misión continúa trabajando en la implementación de medidas de fomento de la confianza mientras se guarda el resultado del reclamo que está teniendo la Corte Internacional de Justicia por la disputa marítima, territorial, e insular. Nuestra oficina en la zona adyacencia realiza verificaciones, la solicitud de ambos gobiernos, facilita reuniones y patrullajes conjuntos entre las fuerzas armadas, y promueve una cultura de paz y cooperación entre las comunidades locales.
Children will be children, and they have harmony. They don't see each other as a different country, but they see each other that they are growing together.
Hoy, esta organización es el guardián regional en defensa de la democracia, la libertad, y los derechos humanos. Los países se han comprometido con estos valores a través de instrumentos legales como la Carta Democrática Interamericana, la Convención Americana de Derechos Humanos, y todas las demás convenciones interamericanas. Nuestro trabajo es mantener los más altos estándares. Debemos ser objetivos, analizar los hechos, denunciar cuando veamos corrupción, inequidad, o amenazas a la libertad. En esos casos, no podemos ser neutral.
More than 100 years since the inauguration of this building, the OES headquarters, our institution still brings together the peoples of the Americas to address our responsibilities as a partnership of nations. As we look to the future, our work must also focus on the construction of a positive agenda that continues to favorably impact millions of lives every day.
SETI's results for 2018 proves our effectiveness as a development partner, placing people at the center of our work and leveraging partnerships and cooperation to transform policy imperatives into action. With an eye on the rapidly changing global context, SETI is innovating to constructively address the emerging challenges and opportunities for the region. As part of our competitiveness program, SETI is designing precise tools to assess assets and capabilities in the productive sector to determine paths towards higher-value goods and services. As our flagship program for partnerships, the Americas' Competitiveness Exchange on Innovation and Entrepreneurship, DAS, will continue to leverage good practices and the power of networks to increase trade and investment in the region.
For us, the role of the OES is very important, connecting countries, connecting governments and private sector, and letting us know what other countries are doing it and how we can replicate that in our countries to enhance development.
For me, who has come here to look at how can we develop our own ecosystem, our own innovation, our own accelerators, I think seeing this touching feeling, seeing the transformation, seeing how quickly it made it happen is a testament to what is possible. So I believe all of us live here strong in our neighborhood.
The Working Group of Experts on Subnational Competitiveness, the GTAX, is our gateway program to promote local economic competitiveness policies alongside municipal and state-level governments, together with the private sector and academia.
Este tipo de reuniones te sirven para darte cuenta de todo lo que está viviendo en América Latina sobre los temas de competitividad y hoy justamente en este sector estamos viendo sobre todos los temas de innovación tecnológica, pues que si hablamos de competitividad tenemos que hablar de tecnología y nos está ayudando mucho para ver el panorama de ver lo que están haciendo otras ciudades y lo que podemos llegar a aplicar también nosotros en México.
The hub on the transfer and commercialization of technology is strengthening national innovation ecosystems by training budding entrepreneurs to take promising products and services from idea to market.
Porque es importante que estemos juntos en esto porque la región tiene que estar unida y me parece que es mucho conocimiento en la región que todavía no está explotado comercialmente como podría hacer y esta es la mejor manera de hacerlo.
Tenemos la proyección de cada año generar y compartir nuevas experiencias entre aquellos que contribuyen a la innovación. Queremos cambiar el cómo lo hemos estado haciendo en Latinoamérica. Queremos generar la unión de los países. Queremos colaborar.
Our virtual platform on technology foresight, Prospector Americas, will support OES member states in identifying and mapping future trends and technological development of critical importance for the Americas.
Este esfuerzo, el cual viene siendo apoyado por la organización de los Estados Americanos, nos permitirá tener una gran información para poder mapear estas iniciativas de innovación y poder que ellas contribuyan al crecimiento económico, a la competitividad, y al bienestar de nuestras naciones.
Como bien sabemos, nos encontramos ya en la cuarta revolución industrial, la que está cambiando rápidamente la forma en que se hace negocio, se produce, se consume, y se genera bienestar y entretenimiento.
...from the government of the Dominican Republic to set new dates for SETI's ministerial meeting. I now submit for consideration of this council the Draft Order of Business revised as indicated in document CD/OD-126/22, revision 1. If there are no objections, the draft order of business is approved. Approved. Colleagues, the next item, the next agenda item refers to the election of officers of the Inter-American Commission Committee on Science and Technology, known as COMSI. As stated in Article 4 of the Rules of Procedure for the Inter-American Committees of CD, and I quote, "Each Inter-American Committee of CD shall elect a..." ...a whole office for three years. ...a regular meeting of the committee. Their terms shall begin on the date of the election and shall last until the election of their successors. In the event that the committee does not meet within that period, the elections may be held in the framework of the regular CD meetings or the meetings of ministers and/or high authorities of the sector in question, provided that the item is included on the meeting agenda. The election shall be affirmative, by affirmative vote of a majority of the member states. The Secretariat has informed the chair that keeping with this provision, three candidatures have been received to date to fill the vacant positions on the COMSI. And these were presented by the delegations of Jamaica, in the person of the Honorable Darrell Baz, Minister of Science, Energy, and Technology of Jamaica for the position of Chair; the delegation of Peru, in the person of Mr. Benjamin Abelardo, I hope I'm saying it right; Marti Corina Castillo, President of the National Council of Science, Technology, and Technological Innovation of Peru for the position of Vice Chair; and the delegation of Chile, in the person of Mr. Flavio Salazar Onpre, Minister of Science, Technology, Knowledge, and Innovation of Chile for the position of Vice Chair. I now open the floor to any member state who may like to refer to this agenda item. With no requests, and I'm making sure there are no requests for the floor. Thank you. With no requests for the floor, and considering that three candidates were presented for the three vacant positions on the COMSI, I propose to the member states of... for the three vacant positions on the CONSET, I propose to the member states of this council to proceed to elect Honorable Darrell Vance from Jamaica as Chair of CONSET, Mr. Benjamin Abelardo Marti Corina Castillo from Peru as Vice Chair of CONSET, and Mr. Flavio Salazar-Entre from Chile as Vice Chair of CONSET by acclamation. I would clap. If there is an agreement, then it is so decided. Thank you. On behalf of this council, I congratulate the elected officers of the Inter-American Committee on Science and Technology for a three-year term period, 2022 to 2025. I am pleased to offer the floor now to the Honorable Darrell Vance, Minister of Science, Energy and Technology of Jamaica as Chair of CONSET.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and let me take this opportunity to congratulate my colleagues who have been elected, like myself, most gracious and humbled. Ambassador Yoland Ivan Smith, permanent representative of Grenada to the OAS and Chair of Inter-American Council for Integral Development. This is Kim Osborn, Executive Secretary for Integral Development of the OAS. Dr. Benjamin Marti Corina, President of the National Council for Science, Technology and Technological Information of Peru, and Mr. Mark Bosgaldia, Chief of Staff, Ministry of Science, Technology and Knowledge and Innovation of Chile. Ambassadors, permanent representatives to the OAS, members and strategic partners of the Inter-American Committee of Science and Technology. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Kindly accept warm greetings on behalf of the government and people of Jamaica. As a newly appointed Chairman of the Inter-American Committee of Science and Technology, let me first emphasize what a privilege and a distinct honor it is to serve at the helm of this noble organization, one of which is renowned globally for its recognition and proliferation of discourse surrounding science, technology and innovation as vital elements for sustainable development, economic growth and knowledge creation and sharing. The past ministerial cycle has seen many successes due to the combined contribution and efforts of all members. Within the Jamaican context, the Ministry of Science, Energy and Technology had the honor of hosting the sixth meeting of ministers and high-level authorities of science and technology on December 7th and 8th, 2021. This was held under the theme "Harnessing the Power of Transformative Sciences and Technologies to Drive Our Communities Forward." Recall that during this meeting, Jamaica informed the delegation of its interest in assuming the chairmanship of the Inter-American Committee of Science and Technology, leading up to the seventh meeting of ministers and high authorities of science and technology in 2024. The government of Jamaica also actively participated in the planned activities of CONSET to include Prospect America's 2022 International Seminar on Transformative Technologies and Technology in Mexico, May 18th and 19th of this year. Additionally, Jamaica took on an active role in presenting the recommendations from the Science and Technology Ministerial to facilitate the Ninth Summit.
Minister, my apologies for interrupt your speech. I think your camera is in the other side.
Okay, mic check. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we are, Minister.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Let me just go back over that section that we missed. Within the Jamaica context... Sorry. Additionally, Jamaica took on an active role in presenting the recommendations from the Science and Technology Ministerial to facilitate the Ninth Summit of Americas held in Los Angeles, June 6th to 10th, 2022. The recommendations and commitments of the sixth REMSET were also recognized and highlighted by the regional agenda of the digital transformation and adopted by the heads of state of government on June 9th, 2022. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, for the upcoming ministerial cycle, 2022 to 2024, as Chair of the CONSET, Jamaica proposes to focus on the main priorities and areas of work as defined by the Declaration of Jamaica, as well as the main initiatives approved by the ministers in the sixth REMSET. The Declaration of Jamaica recognizes the importance of technology foresight and science for decision-making, to prepare member states to address global challenges and development imperatives. The Declaration also emphasizes the critical role of science, technology and innovation to address the main effects and impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and improve resiliency in the Americas, increasing the participation of micro, small and medium enterprises in the global economy through science, technology and innovation, and expanding cooperation efforts and solidarity among the public, private and academic sectors by providing spaces for communities to connect, learn and advance pragmatic and concrete efforts to effect change in our countries. As it pertains to the main priority initiatives approved by the ministers in the sixth REMSET meeting, these include the OAS Youth Academy on Transformative Technologies, which is an initiative designed to train, certify and expand job opportunities in the digital and innovation-driven economy for 10,000 youth by 2024 and 100,000 youngsters by 2026. Of important note is that following the sixth REMSET on December 15th, 2021, the OAS Youth Academy launches its first program on Augmented Reality, offered in partnership with the MITA. This led to the registration of over 22,000 youths from across the Americas on the platform. Other courses on digital skills and transformative technologies are also being developed by the strategic partners of the CONSET, including Strutoryler and other partners including universities and NGOs. Connectivity for All in the Americas, which aims to accelerate the recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, reduce the widening technological and social gaps, and pursue a sustainable, green, resilient and equitable future. The OAS Regional Network of Centers of Excellence is to promote the use of science and technology with a focus on top transformative technologies to promote cooperation in research, engage governments, the private sector and the scientific community of the OAS member states. Additionally, this initiative serves to provide insight and address the main imperatives concerning integral technological development in the Americas as well as to solve pressing challenges in the region. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, the government of Jamaica is ready and eager to provide leadership towards implementation of a regional cooperation agenda on science and technology, using a framework, the Declaration of Jamaica and a result-oriented and inclusive approach. It is believed that we will see all over the Americas improved social, economic and sustainable development in our countries and among our people. Kindly accept my gratitude for being here today and I look forward to your support as we work together to advance the affairs of this noble committee. I thank you.
I guess we will feel free to do so. Thank you, Mr. Vance, for sharing this outline with us. We look forward to the work of CONSET going forward. And I would like now to offer the floor to Mr. Benjamin Marti Corina, President of the Council of Science, Technology and Technological Innovation of Peru, our new Vice Chair. Minister?
Yes, my brother.
Mr. Corina, you have the floor. Marti Corina, you have the floor.
There are no requests in the floor yet.
One of our very able technicians to let me know whether or not we have him connected.
Madam Chair, my apologies but your audio is having some issues. Looks like there is a fan or something like that close to you and...
Okay, let me change that. Please let me know if that's better.
Perfect, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. I apologize again.
Not at all. Do we have a... I believe we need to ask Mr. Corina to request the floor. We've not seen him requesting. Okay. He's standing there. Perfect.
Muchas gracias. Buenas tardes. Tenía dificultad en acceder al micro y a la cámara. Muchísimas gracias. Señoras, señores representantes de las mociones permanentes, regados nacionales de los países miembros, funcionarios de la organización de estados americanos presentes en esta reunión del Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral. En nombre del Consejo Nacional de Ciencia, Tecnología e Innovación del Perú, decido agradecer a ustedes la elección en mi país en la primera vicepresidencia de la Comisión Interamericana de Ciencia y Tecnología. Vuelvo a este foro algunos años después de que presidiera en noviembre del 2004 la primera reunión de ministros y altas autoridades de ciencia y tecnología de la organización de estados americanos en el ámbito del Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral que diera lugar a la declaración de Lima y el Plan de Acción de Lima. En ese Plan de Acción se incluyeron temas centrales para el fortalecimiento de las infraestructuras nacionales y regionales, de las políticas nacionales, regionales y hemisféricas en ciencia y tecnología, de los programas de divulgación de la ciencia y la tecnología y de la educación en ciencias, así como de los programas de indicadores en ciencia, tecnología e innovación, bases de datos portales, publicaciones y revistas científicas. Se trataba de un conjunto amplio de iniciativas hemisféricas en estos diversos campos. En ellos recientes todos estos propósitos de cooperación regional han alcanzado un destacable aunque insuficiente desarrollo, por lo que el trabajo en adelante debería ser más realista, enfocarse en algunas actividades prioritarias y viables y en plazos razonables. Somos conscientes de la creciente brecha de conocimiento entre los países que la revolución tecnológica está generando y que es urgente traducir por sus efectos negativos sobre la economía, la sociedad, el medio ambiente, la institucionalidad en general sobre la vida y el bienestar de las poblaciones de los países de la región. Con la presidencia de Jamaica, contribuiremos a que la Comisión realice con los mejores resultados las actividades que se programen para atender demandas priorizadas por los países miembros y para crear bases sólidas de cooperación. Entre los temas que convoca mayor adhesión entre los países que son parte de este organismo está el de mejorar el... de que el conocimiento contribuya a mejorar la calidad de vida de nuestras poblaciones, elevando a la competitividad de las empresas, muy especialmente las pequeñas empresas que son la principal fuente generadora de empleo en estos países. Apoyaremos la iniciativa Prospect Americas que fue presentada por la Delegación peruana y aprobada en la cuarta reunión de ministros de ciencia y tecnología en el 2017 en Medellín, en Colombia, iniciativa que desde entonces ha venido siendo implementada por la CONSET de manera exitosa y consideramos altamente probable que en el corto plazo podamos contar, como señalado el presidente, una red interamericana de centros de excelencia en tecnologías transformadoras que trabaje colaborativamente para el cierre de brechas de conocimiento y haga más visible e influyente la presencia hemisférica en las estadísticas globales de producción, el resultado de la ciencia, la tecnología y la innovación. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marti Corina, and I hope I have been saying your name correctly and congratulations again on your elections. I am pleased now to offer the floor to Mr. Flavio Salazar, Minister of Science, Technology, Knowledge and Innovation of Chile as Vice Chair of CONSET. Mr. Salazar, you have the floor.
Hola. Un saludo a todas y todas, particularmente especialmente a la señora Kim Gosborn, Secretaria Ejecutiva para el Desarrollo Integral, a Yoland Smith, Presidente del Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral, a quienes me han precedido, el ministro Darrell Vance, Presidente de Día, y Benjamin Marti Corina de Perú. Ambos un cariñoso saludo. Junto con agradecer la invitación a integrar esta mesa directiva quiero señalar el compromiso de Chile a través de este Ministerio de Ciencia, Tecnología, Conocimiento e Innovación de sumir la vicepresidencia de la Comisión Interamericana de Ciencia y Tecnología de la Organización de los Estados Americanos. También quiero agradecer el apoyo del Ministerio de Relaciones Exteriores de mi país y de la Misión Permanente de Chile ante la OEA. Hoy día, este ministerio que me toca conducir es uno de los más nuevos en nuestro país y está junto con el gobierno decidido a avanzar hacia un nuevo modelo de desarrollo que sea sustentable ecológicamente, económicamente y socialmente y donde la ciencia, la tecnología, el conocimiento y la innovación desempeñen un rol preponderante. Necesitamos como región impulsar la soberanía de capacidades científicas tecnológicas y consolidar una integración regional que permita un desarrollo más inclusivo. Nosotros tenemos el convencimiento de que hay que tener una mirada integrada a los problemas actuales para construir una sociedad de conocimiento que integre dimensiones sociales y tecnológicas. Hay una preponderancia de relación entre los territorios, el medio ambiente y las comunidades que es muy importante tener en cuenta cuando uno diseña un modelo de este tipo. Nosotros estamos decididos a aumentar nuestra inversión en ciencia, tecnología, conocimiento e innovación para poder avanzar en estos desafíos e insertarnos de una manera mucho más efectiva en la comunidad internacional. Impulsamos una transformación de la ciencia como un motor de cambio y no como una capacidad solamente extractivista de recursos naturales como ha sido históricamente. Queremos incentivar una investigación orientada, consensuada y compartida. Queremos incentivar una investigación orientada, consensuada y compartida con otros países de la región en función de desafíos globales como es el desafío del cambio climático y de los recursos cívicos. Nuestros principios se basan en la sustentabilidad, en la colaboración, la igualdad de género, la inclusión, la equidad y la diversidad. Centralgamos en una colaboración por sobre la competencia y en una visión transdisciplinaria para abordar problemas complejos. Tenemos una comunidad científica altamente productiva pero pequeña que necesitamos incrementar y también le vamos a dar mucho énfasis a los llamados laboratorios menurales que pueden permitir desarrollar capacidades como energías limpias, como extracción y sofisticación de minerales, la astronomía que es un impacto internacional, las investigaciones transdisciplinarias en áreas como cambio climático que mencioné, desastres socio-naturales, el tema de la océlografía y la corrección subantártica y la antártica también generan expectativas de colaboración que nosotros esperamos transmitir en este espacio. Quiero terminar agradeciendo entonces la posibilidad de seguir participando en este organismo internacional y esperamos dar todo el aporte desde nuestras capacidades para que avancemos como región. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Minister Salazar, and on behalf of the council, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected officers and to wish you every success in the years ahead. Congratulations. Esteemed colleagues, the next agenda item is for information purposes. That is item three on the agenda, the new chairmanship of the Committee of Partnerships for Development Policies. A diplomatic note dated August 23, 2022, Ambassador Maria Fernanda Cortizo, alternate representative of Panama to the OAS, resigned the chairmanship of the Committee on Partnerships for Development Policies. As established in Article 61b of the Rules of Procedure for the Regular and Special Meetings of CD, and I quote, "In the permanent absence of the chair, the vice-chair shall replace him or her until a regular meeting of CD elects a new chair who shall hold office until the election of his or her successor in accordance with Article seven of these rules and procedures," end quote. The vice-chair of the Committee of Partnerships for Development Policies, Mr. Mikel Bullard, alternate representative of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, has graciously accepted the challenge of advancing without delay the preparatory work towards the next regular session of the General Assembly. I thank Mr. Bullard for his disposition to discharge the office of the chairmanship of the committee and kindly ask that all delegations provide him with the necessary support to be able to accomplish the task at hand that will commence immediately after this meeting. I'm sure that I speak on behalf of all representatives in this council to express our gratitude to Ambassador Maria Fernanda Cortizo for the work that she has carried out. We do appreciate the heavy workload that she manages and she also has important personal matters to attend. Ambassador, we thank you and wish you all the very best. Item four on the agenda. To consider the next item referring to the postponement of the preparatory meeting for the fifth meeting of ministers and high authorities of social development and the ministerial meeting as well, I offer the floor to the representative of the Dominican Republic, and that's on the item four on the agenda.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Muy buenas tardes, seguidas delegados. Señora King Boswell, Secretaria Ejecutiva de la SERI, señor Burj Elieh Reda, representación de la SAI. Voy a tomar en este momento estas palabras debido a que nuestros funcionarios del gabinete de política social de República Dominicana han estado teniendo unos problemas de conexión y estaré en representación y daré las palabras a nombre de ellos. Y de parte del señor Francisco Peñaguaba, Coordinador del Gabinete de Políticas Sociales de la República Dominicana, que os le envía cálidos saludos y a la vez les agradece esta oportunidad de acogerlos en este Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral en interés de solicitarles nuevamente su apoyo para posponer la fecha de la reunión preparatoria de la quinta reunión de ministros y altas autoridades de desarrollo social, Quinta Rendes, para el 20 de octubre del 2022. Esta solicitud de cambio de fecha que le vamos a ustedes se debe a varios factores y particularmente tiene como objetivo que las negociaciones, tanto el proyecto de declaración como del Plan de Acción puedan ser realizadas con suficiente tiempo. Dichas negociaciones se seguirán llevando a cabo desde este jueves primero de septiembre a las dos de la tarde, para lo cual invitamos a cada uno de ustedes junto a sus capitales a participar y así terminar de acordar esos documentos en los próximos días por medio de su colaboración y de manera formal en la reunión preparatoria. Señora presidenta, queremos resaltar en esto de que estamos dando pasos firmes en preparación de la Quinta Rendes en nuestro país y en búsqueda de acomodar mejor a los ministros, a las delegaciones y personalidades que visitarán y atenderán a la Quinta Rendes en la ciudad de Santo Domingo y en utilizar de manera más eficiente los recursos del gobierno dominicano, solicitamos a este Pleno su apoyo para la postergación de fecha de dicha reunión de unos días. La nueva fecha propuesta sería el 21 y 22 de noviembre de 2022 en vez del 17 y 18 de noviembre del presente año. Concluímos nuestras palabras reiterando nuestra invitación a todos, a que todos nos acompañen en la República Dominicana. El país se prepara para recibir a sus ministros y altas autoridades de desarrollo social así como a cada uno de los funcionarios que integrarán las delegaciones como a los invitados especiales y al personal de la OEA. Todos ustedes junto a nosotros somos responsables de esta Quinta Rendes y que tenga mejor y mayor de los éxitos ya que trabajaremos en conjunto a partir de este encuentro en noviembre para fortalecer la cooperación hemisférica hacia la reconstrucción resiliente y el desarrollo social sostenible de las Américas. Muchas gracias, señora presidenta.
Thank you very much to the representative of the Dominican Republic. The representative of the Dominican Republic has informed why there is a need to reschedule the preparatory meeting and the fifth meeting of ministers and high authorities of social development. Having said that, it is up to CD to approve adjustments to the sectorial ministerial cycle in this case and for the second time on an exceptional basis and to change the dates of the convened ministerial meeting. For the change of dates of the preparatory meeting, all we need is an agreement of this body. However, to change the date for the ministerial meeting, a resolution is required. I'm informed that the permanent mission of the Dominican Republic has submitted the draft resolution, but the Rules of Procedure preclude the consideration of this draft resolution during this meeting. However, a decision to proceed with the preparations for the said ministerial meeting can be taken so that the process continues. I offer the floor to delegations that may wish to refer to this item. Having given a reasonable time and noting that there are no requests for the floor, the chair understands then that CD agrees with the request as presented by the delegation of the Dominican Republic and is ready to postpone the preparatory meeting and the fifth meeting of ministers and high authorities of social development to be held on October 20th, 2022. The chair further understands that member states agree to change the dates the dates of the fifth meeting of ministers and high authorities of social development as requested by the government of the Dominican Republic to be held now on November 21 and 22, 2022, so November 21st and 22nd, 2022, and instruct the secretariat to continue with the preparation of said meeting including the signing of the necessary agreements with the government of the Dominican Republic. CD also agrees to approve the draft resolution to formalize the new dates at its next regular meeting. If there are no objections, it is so approved. Colleagues, we have concluded all the agenda items for today's meeting and this takes us to item number five, other business. I offer the floor to any delegations that may wish to bring any matter, any other matter to the attention of the council. Again, given a reasonable time with technology, there have been no other matter for the consideration of this council. I thank you for your participation, but before I bang the gavel, I want to say that the meeting will continue, at least the connectivity stay connected because the meeting of the Committee on Partnerships for Development Policies will begin momentarily and that meeting would be chaired by Mr. Mikel Bullard of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. And with these few words, this part of the meeting is adjourned and I thank you so very much for your attendance. I know it's been a long day. I shall stay on to make sure the chair is connected properly. We do have the chair. If you can kindly take over, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good afternoon, colleagues. I am very pleased to welcome you all to this virtual meeting of the Committee on Partnership for Development Policies of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development. As you are all aware, Ambassador Cortizo has resigned from posts due to extenuating circumstances and given my role as vice-chair and in accordance with Article 61b of the CD Rules of Procedure, I am assuming chairmanship of the committee. At the outset, I believe, I speak for not only the delegation of the Bahamas, but I am certain the entire committee. And I extend our thanks and appreciation to Ambassador Cortizo for her stellar work over the course of the past several months at the helm of this committee. We certainly wish her all the very best. As I assume chairmanship, I look forward to the support of all delegations as we work together to advance our organization's efforts in the development space, particularly as we enter this critical period in the lead-up to the 52nd OAS General Assembly. I am advised by the secretariat that we have the required quorum. The secretariat will take note of other delegations as they join. With that, I call to order the first meeting. Colleagues, the first agenda item is consideration of the draft order of business. I now submit for your consideration the draft order of business document CD/OD-139-22. If there are no objections, the draft order of business will be approved. And I open the floor for any delegations to comment. Seeing no delegations requesting the floor, the draft order of business is approved. The second agenda item is presentation on the status of work of the Inter-American Committee on Ports. To complete the review of the status of work of all sectors of CD in preparation for the consideration of mandates to be included in the draft resolution that CD will be presenting to the General Assembly at its next regular session, Mr. Jorge Duran of the Secretariat of the Inter-American Committee on Ports, SIP, will present a semi-annual report on the activities carried out by the SIP. Mr. Duran, you have the floor.
Hello, Chair. Thank you very much, Mikel, for that. I am under the impression that the mission of Honduras wanted to speak as chair of the Inter-American Committee on Ports Executive Board. I am not certain if Ms. Ponce from Honduras is still, still wants to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. I see now that the delegation of Honduras has requested the floor. You have the floor, Honduras.
Sí, muchas gracias, señor presidente. Pues como como presidencia del Consejo, del Comité Ejecutivo de la Comisión Interamericana de Puertos y con base en los artículos 58 y 59 del Reglamento de la Comisión Interamericana de Puertos, aprobado la reunión del Consejo Interamericano para el Desarrollo Integral el 13 de junio del 2017, quisiéramos presentar uniformes sobre las actividades desarrolladas por la presidencia de la CCI, sus vicepresidencias, las presidencias de los comités técnicos consultivos y la secretaría de la CIP. Antes de darle la palabra al señor Jorge Durán, Honduras se complace en informar que por iniciativa durante la última reunión del CCI organizada por el primer vicepresidente uruguay y realizada en marzo del 2022, tal como consta la resolución de Colonia abro paréntesis CCI pleca res punto uno pleca 22 cierro paréntesis, se aprobaron los cambios necesarios al reglamento de la CIP para hacer las reuniones ordinarias de carácter ministerial y de altas autoridades cada tres años en lugar de cada dos años, es decir, estableciendo un calendario para dichas reuniones trienal. Ahora sí, en este contexto quisiera accederle la palabra al jefe de la secretaría de la CIP, el señor Jorge Durán, que por favor nos rinda el informe. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ponce. Thank you very much, Chair. I would then ask the secretariat if we could please present the presentation, the power presentation that we have prepared in English and I will speak in Spanish in that way, which is how SIP always reports with the presentation, the PowerPoint in Spanish, and I will present in English. I don't know if they can assist me on this or if I should just share my screen, which of course I can. Perhaps that is more convenient.
I have already prepared, sir, so if you give me one second.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you so very much. Yes, our report will be very concise as we always do it. It will be based on results exclusively, not on things that will happen, but we have very concrete data and numbers and indicators, which is the way that SIP works. As you know, Chair, we just recently had a meeting with the mission of Barbados. So thank you very much. This is indeed the report of the executive board of Inter-American Committee on Ports called the CCI. And next slide, please. Thank you very much. This is the four issues that we will see. There's a short background and then there is the activity. and then there is the activities of the CECIP chair and vice chairs. Then there's the activities of the chairs, of the technical advisory groups, and lastly, the activities of the secretariat. Next one, please. Thank you.
So, ah, perdón, dije que iba a hablar en español. Les ofrezco una enorme disculpa, este, los antecedentes de esta reunión son la doceava o décimo segunda reunión ordinaria de la CIP, en donde hubo una asistencia récord de 27 estados miembros, se llevó a cabo virtualmente en mayo del 21 y se aprobaron el Plan de Acción de Buenos Aires, así como los diferentes presupuestos. Adelante, por favor. Asimismo, en esta reunión se aprobaron todos los informes de actividades y de manera muy importante se fijaron dos cosas: la 22 reunión del CECIP en marzo de este año y la 23 reunión del CECIP y la 13 reunión de la CIP para el año entrante, el mes de junio, en Ruatán, Honduras. Esto, de hecho, vamos adelante, por favor. Entonces, en esa reunión así quedó el board, el CECIP, el Comité Ejecutivo de la CIP, presidido por la empresa nacional portuaria de Honduras, con dos vicepresidencias de Antigua y Barbuda y también de Uruguay, las autoridades portuarias nacionales, y luego tenemos a Panamá, Barbados, México, Uruguay, Argentina y Perú como los chairs o presidentes de los famosos CTCs, comités técnicos consultivos. Argentina, Paraguay y Estados Unidos son los vicepresidentes de esos grupos que ustedes ven allí. Este es, son las autoridades de la CIP, este es el comité ejecutivo. Adelante, por favor, la siguiente. Gracias. Como se estableció en la reunión 12 de la CIP, la reunión del CECIP se llevó a cabo en marzo 15 de manera virtual, con nueve de los países integrantes de CECIP, que son todos participando. Esta reunión la organizó las vicepresidencias, especialmente la vicepresidencia de Uruguay, con el doctor Juan Curvelo, el presidente de la Administración Nacional Portuaria y con el apoyo del señor Darwin Telamac.